We have previous minutes, students and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public, three minutes per speaker for no longer than 60 minutes. And I'd like to quickly clarify the comments of last meeting. We want to streamline the meetings just a bit. So what we ask is that if you have questions and a number of them, please come to the podium. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak and if you have a number of questions, please ask them at that time. When the superintendent makes his comments later in the meeting, he will answer those questions which he can answer without further research. If the questions are aimed to the board, I will answer them during my comments. We'll then have our superintendent's report, our correspondence and board comments, our personnel agenda, consent agenda. We will have a second executive session and we will then adjourn the meeting. I want to note a correction. On page three of the personnel agenda, letter G, appoint permanent substitute teacher. The effective date...
Should be the 14th.
Okay. No, the correction is on the end date.
Should be April 14th. Oh, it's on the end date?
It's on the end date. So the effective date is 4/14/2014 through 6/26/2016? Wasn't that the question? Or this was? Or she's only through the end of the year? 4/14?
Through the end of the year.
Okay. Through the end of the year. So 4/14. Okay. So the effective date is 4/14/2014 through 6/26/2014. Okay. Do we have a motion for previous minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting held on Monday, March 10, 2014.
Second?
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any students or school presentations tonight? Any parent groups?
Good evening. Okay, I can't see anybody right now. So, my name is Kenya Gadsden. I am the Parent Communicative Coordinator for the district. And I have worked with Mr. Solich from the middle school, who has been very, very cooperative. And we have a workshop, a parent workshop set for April 24th. We will have a presentation on Castle Learning. There will be a representative from Grace Smith House doing a parent workshop on bullying and cyberbullying. And then we will have a presentation from Mr. Ramonino, who volunteered to provide parents with information on athletics in the middle school. At the end of the evening, we will collaborate with the Ron Brown Middle School, which is the PTO, which is very, very active there, and have the parents in there for any kind of questions or concerns that they may have, and then close out the evening. So we'll start around 6:00 PM and end somewhere about 8:00. So flyers will go out and we'll utilize the robo-call to increase some participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Open to the public who would like to speak.
Do you have a sign in?
No, if you could just please state your name.
Okay, so my name is Jessica Turner. I was a teacher in Beacon for eight years and then now work in another district. And I have two students who go to school here. And so I have a couple of questions for the board and the superintendent. Number one, I haven't heard anything from this body about the current projected deficit in our budget, when all the other districts have already started promoting that. So I was wondering why that hasn't been shared? Also, there was a meeting between the New York State Assembly, Senate, and the Small City School District superintendents last week, and I wanted to know if you attended, and if not, why? I want to know if Beacon has been sending anybody to the Fair Funding Committee meetings and those rallies that are promoting fair funding for small city school districts, because I haven't seen anybody at them, and I want to know why we're not joining that mantra that our schools deserve the same amount of funding as New York City and charter schools? I want to know why our district hasn't promoted anything on the fact that the state has just released last week that there's only $550 million to New York City, another $400 million to fund charter schools and private schools, and that money is being taken away from our kids and our programs here where we will have to cut. I want to know why we haven't joined in that. I know that my superintendent and our district has sent out invitations to join our rallies, where Newburgh is joining tomorrow, Kingston's joining, Ellenville's joining to rally for fair funding for small city schools. That upstate New York deserves the same amount of funding as New York City, and I want to know why we haven't joined those. Because our kids in Beacon deserve the same amount of money as the kids in New York City. We should have to... I don't know what you guys are looking at cutting, but I want to know, if the state is finalizing their budget this, the end of this week, why haven't we said anything to our public and why haven't we joined these groups?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
As our community taxpayer, last meeting, I think there were a lot of things that weren't kind of left on our table and not answered these ways, that time that the questions were asked. I want to apologize to the board if I seem to be over the top on that meeting, but I don't think it was without cost. So, at the last meeting, I asked about our policy for students whose parents opted them out of state assessment, what our policy was going to be. Bill, you alluded in your report later on after questions couldn't even be asked because there was no exchange, that as part of the county school board association that you were... they were looking at something that would be uniformed countywide. I know Waplanders is not going to be allowing students to be able to read, it won't be just sit and stare. I hope that our district has decided to act on its own in the best interest of our students and not worry what other districts are doing with their students. I don't pay taxes to those other school districts. I pay my taxes here, and I'm only interested in the best for my grandchildren and my nieces and nephews that attend the schools here, elementary, middle school, and high school. Busing, I believe it was stated by our director of transportation last week that we bused 20 private schools as well as preschools slash daycare centers. I think that's correct. I can always look up on the video. My question is, why are we busing children to preschools and daycare centers when we can't, where apparently we don't have the money to be able to transport our kids to elementary schools? The other day, I saw a child walking up Sergeant Avenue School there where there's no sidewalks and walk into school. For my granddaughters who go to Forestville School District, they would have, although it's .8 miles to the school, they would have to walk past seven registered pedophiles in order to do that. Doesn't seem very safe to me. Okay, in the 50s and 60s, you know, our communities weren't like that, we could do that. We have students that live on the other side of the prison, who I know where is kind of official probably, but they're within a half mile of middle school and high school, and they're picked up and transported to and fro as well. Seems like a little waste of money to me, seeing how we're not providing transportation to our youngest children. And the same thing happens if you live over on Allen Avenue, DePister area, those where there's no sidewalks, those children are bused out. For several years, I've been asking about the middle school. At least eight years, about being out of compliance. I've asked your three predecessors, Dr. Dorwood, how we're going to address this issue. Part of it was when we had a teacher, a certified science teacher teaching technology education, completely out of his certification area, but they were calling it technology or synergistics, which was supposed to replace the technology. We are providing unmandated programs to our middle school students such as, and this is going to get me in trouble with teachers, I know that, such as foreign language teachers. There, the students only have to pass a proficiency test by the time they finish ninth grade. There's no mandate that they take foreign language in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but there is a mandate that they take technology education and that they take home careers and are in these other things. And because of the way our schedule is based at the middle school, being eight periods, we have more students not taking the mandated programs than are taking the programs because of AIS.
Mr. Stark, do you have additional questions?
I have one more. I have one more, I have?
You're beyond five minutes now.
No, I'm not. I haven't watched my watch, Melissa, okay?
As I watched mine.
Okay.
I'd like you to quickly ask one last question.
Okay. See, this is part of the problem here, Melissa, that you started last week. In the paper, superintendent stated that they did not want to reduce programs, went on to say that those staff, that those staff that are retiring may not be replaced. And I applaud you on that. But what happens if a teacher that is retiring is the only one that teaches that discipline, that mandated program? Well, before we had, where they weren't going to eliminate program, but yet when a teacher retired, they didn't replace them. One final comment, Melissa, if I may, and this comes from your 2012, 2013 goals. I guess we didn't manage to make up goals for this year. And with parent and community engagement, to gain greater involvement and buy-in for our schools from the Beacon community, okay, open up layers of communications, okay? If you want to streamline meetings, Melissa, reduce the amount of time you spend in that back room.
Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Mary. I'm a parent of two children on South Avenue. I just, I'm sorry, I missed the, is this a new policy to not answer their questions? Or will you be answering some of the questions that were?
Yes. The change is that at times there were, each speaker has three minutes to ask questions. And what was happening in many, many instances, that the questions, we would begin a dialogue back and forth. And in order to streamline the meetings, because that ended, began to take a greater amount of time that was allotted for public comment at times. So what we've asked to do in order to streamline the process is that if the person has many questions, they may ask those questions. During the superintendent's comments, he will have the opportunity to answer those questions that he can answer without greater research. Because at times, some of those questions probably did require greater research and answers were given without the clarity that maybe was needed. So we're only changing that process in that way. It's not a matter of questions not going to be answered. They will be answered to the best of the ability at this time, and if they can't be answered at the meeting, they will be answered, you know, soon after, at the next meeting or through a meeting with the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you. Because I was also very curious about the gap in the budget. We knew that this was a question.
Right.
Thank you.
I just had to just re-ask the question about the seven habits possibly being introduced to the other elementary schools. It does exist in one of the schools. We find it very effective and efficient. Not sure if we're going to actually introduce it to the others, but a response to that would be helpful, so I could actually let it go. In the past, I've had issues on disproportionality in the school district. I just want to know where we are with that, other than what the advertisement caption says underneath our hiring process. And then my main concern, well, before that, the PTO, the PTA, and the PTA collaboration is still moving forward. We're enjoying each other, giving ideas to one another, so we're growing in that. So I think that, again, I think that you have to build a foundation where there is no, where there is inconsistency above you. And so, in the economic climate that we continue to have, it is a great move for this district, only in my opinion, that can actually form this event and the parents who are dedicated to the care of our children, who go from school to school, all the way up to high school, and still come back to help, still exist. So that is one positive thing that I continue to see in the district. My last issue is that the times are changing with most y'all's held by Americans, the work responsibilities do not match the monetary reward. Our children are suffering as they are not getting the education they deserve. A self-analysis of the leaders, parents, and teachers must be done. Our futures are at stake because our children are the individuals that will run the forefront for us as we sit in our rocking chairs. What will the cuts be this year? Will we know at the last hour, when we have no other choice? Being faced with cuts when there is a projected need to increase fundamental reading programs is very sad. I will say that we have actively reacted long enough. Let's take the issues and deal with them as a team. Thank you, and have a great night.
Good evening, everybody. I have a question, but I have a statement I'd like to share. As Kenya was talking about the committee that we formed, and we spoke about that, I've spoken about that in the last few months, I just wanted to give a little bit of an update. In March, we did meet. Once again, it was well-attended, lots of collaboration with parents, and it seems to be growing in strength and numbers. We want to continue to keep the district and as well as the board informed as to, you know, some of the things that we're doing. We have a distribution list, and we send out information. I know there's a couple of board members on that distribution list, and the minutes will be forthcoming. A little behind on that, so I apologize. I also want to thank Anne Marie Quateroni, our business manager, Assistant Superintendent for Business. She did attend, not in this last meeting, but the meeting prior, and talked quite a bit about some really pertinent and important information. I have reached out to Anne Marie once again to see if she would be willing to come forward when the time is right, prior to the budget, to talk with the group, just so we're all ready to go when it's time to really get this budget moving forward. And I've been here for a long time, you know, as a teacher here, 20 years, and as the union president for seven. And I have the utmost faith in this board and in Anne Marie that we will bring forward a budget that this community can support, and that will be fiscally sound, and that will be best for kids. We are under some tough times, as we all know. Oftentimes, when there's stressors in the economy, there creates divide amongst people. But one thing we do know is that we all care about kids, all of us here in this room and sitting forward at the table here. We need to keep our heads. I think the parents have, in the community, are more concerned now than ever. It's hard not to be with all the media, so it's hard to avoid it. It's like kind of baiting us in, but there is a reality to it as well. So with that being said, we're going to use this committee as a platform and a venue to help support the school budget in a positive way. There's lots of things that teachers' unions and PTOs can do that we know that school districts are restricted in doing legally. So we are in full support, as the PTA has always been, and now we have a whole mess of parents out there that are following and right with us. So we will continue to keep everybody updated. Our next meeting is planned for May, but we're going to bump it up till probably the end of April. We'll keep you informed. And once we get the budget information, if that could be shared with me, that would be great. And then hopefully Anne Marie, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, if it is, you would be willing to come forward and help with that. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Thank you.
So, we'll try to take care of a couple of the questions. Some of them might require a little bit of additional research, and we can come back at the next meeting with those answers. We have actually, one of the preceding meetings talked about the overall budget deficit. Anne Marie, could you maybe briefly go through that information?
The current status right now is that we are, we're being, we're having a budget review by the New York State Controller's Office, which is part of our, every year, we have a deficit financing bond, which we're almost done with paying. Part of that service that they perform is auditing our tax cap. So we are in the process of finalizing our tax cap to move forward. I will tell you, it will be less than 2% for Beacon and probably most of the other districts around, so it's very difficult to move forward with that. Dr. Dorwood and I had a conversation with one of the reporters at the Pecific Journal, so we did mention in that article that the deficit is right now between $1.3 and $1.4 million. But we have a plan, and we're working with the board to come up with a plan. We are very optimistic that the legislature will give us additional state aid, that it will not be what the governor has suggested. I mean, as you're reading in the newspaper, you will find that most districts are very upset with what the governor has put out, because it's significantly lower than last year and what we were anticipating. So that's probably currently where we are, and we're going to, we have a, the next board meeting workshop will be a full presentation on the budget. By then, we will have, hopefully, if the state has passed the budget on time, we will have the legislative run, so we'll have better numbers, and then we can discuss fully before the board adopts it at the second meeting in April. So we have a little bit over a month before we need to get there.
In the second part of that question, I'll have to reach out to my counterparts. You had said Newburgh, and I did not receive an invitation, so the honest answer is I wasn't aware that they were holding those meetings, but that may be in part because...
Small city school meetings?
Yeah. So I must probably need to talk to somebody to make sure that they have me on that in a minute. Next, for Mr. Stark, we had switched up that process at the last meeting, so I know that you, one of the questions you had put out at the beginning was about the opt-out, and we did come back and touch on that at the end. So if you remember, Bill had kind of broached the subject, and then I talked about the fact that we have a informational sheet prepared for any parent who's asking questions about the opt-out. As people may know, there is no official opt-out. The state does not allow for an opt-out. But one of the things that's described in this form is that whereas parents can choose to try to hold their kids back from taking the assessments in a variety of ways, there is no official opt-out. And so on the school side, quite often, we'll get the question, so what impact is that going to have? And part of what we're trying to explain is that it does actually have an impact on the school, because it shows up essentially almost as a zero when they're factoring how we're doing. And then under APPR, as you know, student test scores are linked both to the teachers and to the administrators, and so it does have an impact there as well. The, as far as the middle school being out of compliance, that's something I probably would have to look into, maybe I can come back with more information at the next meeting. And the busing, busing distances are established by the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it actually requires board voter approval, and so we currently are at 1.5 miles.
Within the city of Beacon. Mr. Stark also mentioned the 22 private schools we do. I have, I put up Ron's PowerPoint. We have 23 special education locations, 22 private parochial. We do transport to daycare that's within the district. It's just another stop on a regular route. It's not outside of the district by any means. So I know that Ron mentioned that, because we do have children that are at daycare before and after school, so they are brought to those locations, but they are within Beacon, and they are considered a stop on a regular route within the city.
And that gets a little bit in, so then, I'd like to clarify, that gets a little bit into the idea that if we have students that are within the 15-mile limit, we are obligated to provide transportation. If they're outside of the 15-mile limit, we are not, but for the case of the preschool, if we have an existing run that's not going to require any substantial additional time, we, schools quite often do drop the kids off, even if it's on the way. Correct?
Right.
And then to Kenya, the question about the seven habits, that is something that they're doing in Sargent. I think they've had it in place for a number of years. One of the things that you'll see in the district strategic plan, one of the goals was related to try and get the four elementaries in particular sort of on equal footing. And you'll notice that I worded it in terms of the academic program. Part of what we had talked about internally was that I think each of the buildings has sort of their own flair, flavor for how they're doing some of the non-academic pieces. In Sargent, seven habits tends to be what they've centered their program around. That's not true in the other buildings. So the question is, are we going to move that to the other buildings? I did not have a plan to do that. That was really not part of what we were trying to do relative to the academic piece. Although, I guess what I would say is if ever we felt that one of those types of programs was better than their counterpart in another school, we might have a conversation about expanding it to all the schools. And then, it wasn't really a question, but I think in your last comment, you mentioned something about the budget and the reading program. Part of what Frank had mentioned in his budget presentation, we've had some successes with the Wilson Reading Program. He actually had come to me, and I forget the exact numbers, but maybe looking to get some additional teachers in the elementary level into that program. We believe that we have the capacity within some of our other funding mechanisms, grants and otherwise, to maybe have more people go than what initially Frank was thinking. So we're trying to make use of the resources we have to strengthen the reading program. Oh, the disproportionality, so, he may not, he may say he doesn't want to be put on the spot, but Frank is actually involved in working with the group that guides us on the disproportionality issue. And we've had support and training throughout the course of years. So for example, even today, there was some training around that issue. And part of what we've been in discussions about is maybe having, is it TACTD, the group? Don't ask me what that stands for, but Frank always refers to it as TACTD, to have them come out and maybe do some sort of a presentation, even at this level, so people have an understanding of what's going on in the district regarding disproportionality. Did I do okay, Frank? I got the thumbs up. So I think, but I don't know if you have specifics as far as any of the trainings that have happened?
Well, there's a larger plan. It falls under the strategic plan that you put out and approved. It's NYU Technical Assistance Center for Disproportionality. That's the TACTD. Today, we had a professional development trainer here that spoke to high school teachers, middle school teachers, related service people. He's coming back in April. But there is a need for a lot of conversation around this, but there is a plan. And, you know, under your direction, we'd be happy to share it with anybody who wants it and wants to join in.
Okay. Kenya, raise your hand. So at some point... Kenya raised her hand, so at some point we can...
I already got you, no.
So, we switched things up there a little bit, wanted to make sure to respond to your questions, but I, under my comments, what I was going to talk about, because it's still under superintendent's comments, I do want to make sure to thank Mr. Mulhern for his presentation on the budget. We appreciate all the work that you put into that. And also, tomorrow night, just as a reminder, we have our dropout prevention forum that's going to be hosted here in the high school, starts at 6:30, we would invite all of you to attend or to pass the word. And then lastly, just to share with the board, I had the opportunity to go out and speak with the NAACP, the local chapter, last Thursday, and I see Anesta is here, I was going to say that I, it seemed to go well, but now I'm nervous because if she doesn't think it went well. But they did actually invite me to come back at an upcoming meeting to maybe talk about the budget, so once we get to the point that the budget has been adopted, I think it'd be good to get out and talk to them and to others, if others are interested in having this come out, so that people in the community can better understand the budget that we're putting together.
Do we have any board comments tonight? I would also like to thank Frank Mulhern for your in-depth reporting on our special ed department, and Ms. Trazi as well, for your work towards tonight's meeting. I just want to put some reminders out there. In the Heights will be the play in our beautiful theater the weekend of April 25th through the 27th, and we received emails this week regarding the sneak peek, so everybody has the opportunity, free of, you know, without admission fee, to come and get a sneak to that play on April 7th at 7:00 PM.
Actually, there's, we have a board meeting that night.
It's the night of the meeting?
Yeah, the 7th, we have a meeting on the 7th. So I've already been in touch with Anthony and Kelly.
Later today, we're trying to figure out that.
And it was already, it was supposed to be on the 9th, and it was changed to the 7th.
Okay.
So, I've been in touch with Anthony about it, and he knows, and so they're trying to figure something out, had to do some contractual obligation with the rights to the show, had them having to change the date from the 9th to the 7th.
Okay. Okay, so we'll scratch that until...
So we're scratching it for us. Unless we do it as a workshop.
During budget season, it's less than likely that that will happen, and it's unfortunate that I was not aware that there was an issue. Okay.
This will happen today, because we got the email, it was on the 7th. And I just responded to them, I said, "We got a board meeting on that night," so he responded back to Kelly. I said, "You guys deal with it, I'm just looking at the meeting that night." It was, I didn't know how to get changed. I had it down for the 9th until I got the email today.
I thought we got that email, please. Okay, we'll move on to the personnel agenda. May I have a motion for the personnel agenda?
Motion to approve the personnel agenda, items A through J as attached.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items 12.02 through 12.07.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board is not expected to take action.